All right, the April 3 meeting of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later broadcasts. First item on the agenda is approval for minutes from March 20th. We were all here for that. Are there any corrections or amendments anyone would like to make?
No.
Do you have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. We're not seeing anyone in the audience raising their hands, so that would move us to correspondence.
Mr. Chair, sorry. Mr. Chair, in your drive, there's an email from Rockport community member Antoinette. I'm going to say Gugliano, but if I say that wrong, I apologize, Antoinette. And the subject of this email was preserve Long Beach to preserve Rockport school budget. So it has been in your drive for a little bit of time now. So I have the assumption that all committee members have reviewed that email, are aware of its contents, and we just want to let Antoinette know that we have taken her thoughts on her advisement and have read through the email and appreciate her engaging with the committee.
Right. Personnel. I don't believe we have any at this time.
We do not.
That would move us to Student Advisory Committee, right?
All right, so this has been a pretty busy time of year for the students. Quarter three just ended last Friday or last Thursday due to the holiday. Spring sports games are starting up this week. We had our career day today, which was a great success. The Spanish trip to Spain is leaving on next Friday, and I know that I have a couple of friends who are going that are really looking forward to that. We have our music concerts this week. The high school performed tomorrow, and the middle school and elementary school performed earlier this week. The middle school and high school plays are starting up as well. I know auditioning for the high school play was last week, and I think the rehearsals are starting soon. The MCAS in the high school just was taking place this week and/or last week, and the middle school and elementary school will be having that coming up the coming weeks.
So, Mr. Chair, I just told Mr. Dross that this is all downhill from here, right? He's a senior. It goes fast and furious, and his announcements will get longer and longer because we have a lot of culminating activities coming up, right, that you will be part of many. But, you know, things like the end of the drama season, the culmination of all of our fine arts programming, art shows, concerts, it's going to be fast and furious. So I do encourage the public to pay attention. Our website is in great shape. If you click on the calendar, you can choose the school or the whole district, and everything is updated in real time, so you can go there and get the whole commercial. So if you want to see anything going on in our schools and really celebrate the successes of our students, that's the best way to get all of the information. But really proud of the kids and the staff for the amount of work that has gone into this school year, and it's a, it is fast and furious between now and June 17th.
Wow. Are you ready for this, Eric?
Oh, it's definitely going to be a lot. Big changes coming up.
Well, good luck for the rest of the year. Subcommittee updates. I don't believe we have any. That would move us to some updated COVID guidance.
I skipped one, sorry. That was my fault. So also in your drive, I shared an email with you that came from our nursing staff around the Mass Department of Public Health has supported the new recommendations that the CDC put out regarding protocols for COVID-19 as well as all respiratory viruses. So I won't read this, you know, in totality, but I put it in there so you could see what some of the programmatic shifts are and the protocol shifts are. The biggest takeaway is we no longer have to stay out of school or work for five days, and they have some fever-free rules and some symptom-free rules in there. So we just ask community members, staff, and parents to pay good attention to the new updates and work with our nursing staff as necessary.
It's amazing that we're at this point.
Right.
In the middle of it, we never thought we'd get here. That's great. New business. We have a regional sped transportation exploration update.
So this is a real late addition. I had the NEC consortium board meeting this morning, and one of our colleagues from, thank you, PBD, I almost said Salem again, one of our colleagues from PBD, their business manager, is taking the lead on this initiative. He has some experience in other districts and working with other collaboratives. And since my time here, we've been talking a lot about regional efficiencies, and so has the 20-member consortium in a lot of ways. And one of the ways we started to really brainstorm this about a month or two ago is can we get any bang for our buck around regionalizing our specialized transportation? Right now, we're all independently contracting with a variety of transportation services. You know, we could have six or seven in a small district with, you know, 15 vans. Someone else could have seven or nine vendors with 50 vans coming into the district and with no rhyme or reason to sharing of bus routes and transportation for kids who really need to go off campus for other services. So this individual has really taken the lead. He led us through his proposal. We did apply for a grant as a group that Desi was putting out to do exploratory work in this area. Unfortunately, the makeup of the North Shore doesn't necessarily lend us to qualify for the grant. It went to other parts of the state. So as a result, what we're trying to do is put together an exploratory process to look at the feasibility and benefits of doing this work. And so we were asked to identify whether we were interested or not. I did, on behalf of the district, let them know that I think we are highly interested in taking a look at what this could look like. So this means we're going to jointly fund the cost of exploring this work. That means hiring a consultant or an employee who would be in charge of collecting and analyzing the data, developing draft scenarios. That data could be how many specialized students does each district have? Where do they go? How can we create shared bus routes from district to district to district that stay within that one-hour rules and regs that the state has for specialized transportation? And ultimately also fund the resources and the tools that this person or team would need necessary to put this together. We do not have a number. I will come back to the committee when I have a number, what the buy-in, so to speak, is. I don't think it's going to be, you know, an overwhelmingly large number because there's 20-member districts. And I was on a Zoom meeting this morning, and in the five minutes that he asked the question, out of 20, 15 of our member districts said yep, 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 yep. So I do think there's a serious need for this. There's a cost control aspect to it. There's also the opportunity to really take care of the lives of kids a little better who are on specialized transportation and to make sure that they just have a better situation, you know, equitable transportation vehicles, for example, drivers who are all vetted similarly, that those kind of bang-for-your-buck benefits that don't necessarily equal dollars, but really equal the quality of the experience that the child has. So I will come back with the number. We anticipate this being an exploratory program or process for almost the entire school year, and then the board coming back together to take a look at the data probably earlier than this time next year, I'm hoping January, February, but I don't have a date yet. And then the group is targeting the following school year for possible implementation. So when you think about efficiencies, just think about, you know, in our student services office, the amount of time and effort and the person power that goes into managing all of that in 15 or 20 different districts, and what that labor looks like and how differentiated that labor is based on the district. We're talking about one point person or point people who manage all of that work for however many districts jump on board with us. So really excited about the cost savings efficiencies, the consistency possibilities. So I'll just continue to give you updates on that. But my hope is I'll have a number before the end of this year so that we know what we're budgeting for as we explore this work. So thoughts around this, questions?
I think it's definitely worth mentioning when our state reps are here because in the past, we've mentioned collaborative efforts. Occasionally, they're able to spring some money to help us fund it, so I think they would like to hear about it, even if they can't cut a check for us. And then the question that sprung to mind that maybe June may have a window into is, is it as difficult to find? I mean, clearly, there's a benefit in a better transportation experience and probably in finding drivers to move the children. Is it as difficult to find drivers from these? I know that private companies typically do it, as there is for bus transportation drivers.
Well, unlike a school bus where you need a very specialized license, they don't need that requirement. They're driving vans or very small buses, so that requirement is off the table. So it does open up opportunity for more drivers. However, there's still a shortage
Yeah.
of drivers, and COVID just really amplified it. If you had people that were maybe supporting, we had a bunch of companies where their employees were supporting families from other countries, you know, back home, and if they weren't working, they might have returned home and not come back to the U.S. or, and that's why the state really encouraged us to negotiate contracts during the COVID when we were in lockdown to ensure that we retain these employees and companies, and it did, it did work. So it's, it's a lot of work for our student services, and Cheryl and Martha really put a lot of effort. They're the ones that put these bids together and do all the work. And there's a lot of rules that are more than regular ed, transporting regular ed students as well. So it's, it is a lot of work. So I do think it's definitely worth exploring the option of centralizing.
Seems like a lot of benefit could come from it.
Yeah. You know, worst case, you're, you're no worse off than you were before. In the best case, you, it's totally centralized and streamlined for the whole North Shore.
We really think it's going to offer quality control, too.
Yes.
Right? Well, you talked about the driver shortage, so to speak, which is happening all over the place in a variety of transportation services. But I think when we have one company, we can set the bar in a contract for what the profile of a driver is, what the qualifications are, what the expectations are. And right now, when you have so many independent contractors doing that for 20 different districts, it really does run the gamut in, as far as, you know, skill sets, abilities, high expectations for employees, that kind of stuff. So this will allow us, you know, it would be our regional transportation company, so to speak, you know, and we would have somebody paid. So they would, they would still be under the umbrella of the consortium, under the umbrella of the Board of Directors, and there'd be some governance there that we actually don't have at all right now because we just hire independent contractors. So I really think, for the sake of kids, for the sake of safety, for the sake of employment, and ultimately budget and efficiencies, I think it's a really good option. So I, I'm excited to kind of watch it happen.
That's great.
I know you were saying it's sort of like under the umbrella of the Board of Directors and the consortium. Would it be for kids who are being transported anywhere?
Yes.
Or just, okay, so not just the consortium, but to any other district?
Right. Any Rockport student is going to any Rockport, sorry, to out of any, out of district placement. Yes, correct.
Great. Looks good. So I think we're moving on now to the Student Opportunity Act overview and.
We are. So we'll bring Jody Gudue up, who will lead most of this conversation for us. On this one slide, I apologize for breaking the rules of slide decks here. There's quite a bit of language, but this comes right off of Desi's SOA plan guidance document, so I just wanted you to have a cheat sheet for now and later, just as a reminder, if you weren't part of this work or if you blocked this part of your life away coming into COVID and out of COVID, that, you know, the state upped the ante and put together the Student Opportunity Act around 2019 as an opportunity to really inject significant funds into the system of supporting the Commonwealth's educational programming. It is tied to Chapter 70 and other pieces of funding, and it also provides a really heavy section of accountability. So it's supposed to dovetail with your strategy for district improvement or your district improvement plans. So you have two major drivers in public school systems. One is the district improvement plan, and the other now is the SOA plan. And so Jody will kind of take us through a drive-by tonight on that super cumbersome process and document. What she's created for you, for us tonight is the, you know, the real easy-to-read, believe it or not, this is the easy-to-read version, the easy-to-read cheat sheet with 10 pages. If you look at the Desi version, it's a web-based, you know, portal that you enter all this information in. So just a reminder that Jody actually has another full-time job as the Assistant Principal of the Elementary School and has graciously stepped into the very small part-time role of working on curriculum instruction assessment. So I do want to acknowledge her now and potentially a second time when she's done with this, for the amount of work and time and effort that goes into this. But I will turn it over to Jody to take us through this, and I'll pop it up on the screen for people.
Yeah. SOA, surprise. Like Mark said, this is, it's entered into GEMS through the state, the grant management system. So the formatting is basically their template. We didn't have a lot of room to wiggle around with it. But I think the summary really gives you the overview of what we're looking to do. Like Mark said, it was, we wrote one in 2019. It got extended for four years instead of three because of COVID. And when we took a look at it this time, we really needed to rewrite the entire thing based on where we're at and the data we have currently. So the summarization said, you know, we come up with the three areas that we think are going to help close the achievement gap. It's not so much about our SDI and our overall goals and a really comprehensive plan. It's more about, let's look at these student groups and which ones have the most disparity in the data and focus on what is going to help them achieve at the same rate as all students. So the two groups we've identified were the students with disabilities, which is always the group that gets identified, and then the students from low-income households as well. And the three things that we're looking at are an MTSS, a multi-tiered system of support model, which was, is part of our SDI as well. So that is something that's already ongoing, and that will help us with tier one, tier two, tier three instruction in all areas eventually as we roll it out across the district. The second one is supporting the high-quality instructional materials that we've invested so much into through our own funds and through grant funds in the past. So in order to help our teachers implement the literacy, which aligns with literacy for all in our PD plan, we're going to hire the instructional coach, which is going to help in the elementary school area for that. And we have professional development already contracted with Keys to Literacy to help with the instructional practices for literacy. That is at the middle and the high school, I mean, the elementary and the middle school. And our third area that's going to help is while we have interventionists at the elementary, we really don't have any, any other areas. So we're going to add the two acceleration specialists, who are interventionists under a new title based on Desi's acceleration framework, meaning we want the kids to have access to grade-level instruction to help close that gap. So one will be mathematics, six through 12. One will be literacy, six through 12. So what we identify through the MTSS model, through instructional support teams, and with response to intervention, with the new schedule and the new flex blocks, however that plays out, these people will be able to support those kids in their classrooms and in some pull-out model. So then we go through a whole bunch of data, which you have seen so much of this already in the past through MCAS. There's a lot of it having to do with MCAS, a lot of it that comes out of the SOA resources that Desi has. You can read every district in the state's SOA plan on Desi, but they also have created these district heat maps to help you identify where the greatest discrepancies in the data are. So all of this data helps us come with the three critical areas that need the attention, which are data-informed student ID and strategy implementation, which is more about making sure that the MTSS system is data-based and data-driven so that we're making our decisions based on the data that we're collecting instead of just anecdotal data from teachers. Tier one instruction is another area that we know we really need to focus on improving. We have the MTSS Steering Committee now, who is working towards developing the MTSS plan, and they've identified that tier one instruction. We don't have 80% meeting what we need them to meet yet. So tier one is our first area that we want to look at. And then the evidence-based supports for struggling learners, and that is the tier three piece along with our acceleration specialists and figuring out ways to intensify instructions for the students who aren't making the progress we want them to through intervention. Instead of just jumping to referring for special ed, we can offer them more time, different modes, or different types of interventions to help that move forward. This is, again, their template and their way of doing things, so there's a lot of repetition. So I think I can skip right past the next piece and jump into the, the three-year targets was, we could pick our own three-year targets, but we also have to look at what the state identifies as our lowest-performing students. So we're just going with what the state identifies as our lowest performing students. They send that to us every year. We get a list of who those students are, the lowest 25% with the MCAS data. And then in terms of engaging families and caregivers and other stakeholders, through all of the communication systems that we've set up in all the schools, we feel like a lot of this information has gone out to families in that, that mode. We've done a lot of active outreach from staff directly to families, so they target the families and letting them know how their students are doing, how they're performing. And our interventionists in the elementary school provide progress reports and open houses and the opportunity for parents to hear what's going on in that area as well. Our school councils have reviewed all of our SDIs, so they have seen the work that we're doing, and all of this is connected. So pretty much that piece is good. And then there's all of this, which brings us up to, and I don't know what page you have, bottom of five?
Yep.
This is where we have our three focus areas. And these are dropdown menus from Desi, and the MTSS falls under, that's not our focus area, that's their focus area, 1.2 is an MTSS system, and we're doing that for effective student support system. So using an effective approach and model for MTSS. We've had instructional supports teams and PIPs teams and all kinds of supports in place, but we need a really good research-based, aligned, district-wide MTSS system to make this work, I think, more effectively. Our data is showing we still need a lot of work to close these gaps. So what that section is, it's what we've done. We've done MTSS professional development. We've formed a steering committee. We've done a needs assessment, and we've done a lot of data work at the elementary school, and that's just going to move forward. The money pieces that you see are over three years. That's the cost of what it will cost for over three years, and the committee chair, and then we're going to be researching, and we're looking at two right now, a data analytics platform, which gives us a visualization of all the data we collect in one good snapshot. We have our own internal right now, but we're looking at a system that can help us pull that out in a better model to help people look at the data. Focus area two dash, 2.1 is high-quality and engaging instructional materials, which we have brought in, but our focus and our evidence-based program will be supporting that implementation. So all of the professional development around implementing into reading for K5 and doing Keys to Literacy to help with instructional practices from K through eight will help support that area, including the instructional coach in this area, who will be working in classrooms in both literacy and math, hopefully by the end of the year and moving forward, and helping with the data meetings at the elementary school level. And again, that money is over three years. And the last area is focus area 2.2, and it's using the MTSS to implement the academic supports and interventions that we were talking about, which is the acceleration specialist for the middle and the high school. And that will work under the model for which we, we use that, the ESER, ESER Fund, the ES3 funds for, and we had the acceleration specialist to do some recovery and acceleration. Now it will be actually focused on the students who need it in six to, six through 12. And again, that money is over three years.
So I, I think what's important to recognize is that public schools are never at a loss for data, right? We drown in data. We talk about data, and I wrote down data, dot, 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 now what? Because I think that's the public frustration. That's the frustration of parents. That's the frustration of students who know they might not be hitting a mark where they would like to get. And believe it or not, that's often the frustration of educators. So we've spent a year and a half together as a leadership team talking about the difference between outputs and outcomes. The data are the outputs. That's the stuff we collect that tells us students are or are not meeting grade-level benchmarks, are or are not ahead of their peers, or struggling to be college and career-ready. So what happens in small districts is you have capacity concerns. You know, we, we spend time and money in inefficient ways to build our own database system. We try to have one specialist cover the needs of too many students in an acceleration intervention model or in multiple subject areas when that's not the most efficient way to do it based on what their licensure and expertise is. So by hyper-focusing on this, particularly around identifying the MTSS work, it has to turn into the now what, and that's the conversation we've continued to have. I want to be sitting here in the year talking about which instructional practices have been implemented, how they've impacted kids. I can't tell you the names, but we can ensure that it's by name and by achievement. The struggle we have is if kids are identified here and here and here at different achievement levels, and all of them grow, because I'm a big fan of the growth model, but if they all grow and they're here, here, and here, you haven't closed the gap. If I'm struggling, he's high achieving, you're in the middle, and we all grow, number one, the top-level kids, the data shows, they have less room to grow, right? Michael Jordan's already the best basketball player on the planet. Sorry, LeBron fans. But if that's factually true, maintenance is not a bad word. If I could stay Michael Jordan for 20 years, that's fantastic. So the growth model is really impactful when you're really looking at kids who are just at and below grade level for whatever their reasons are and how to close that gap so that everybody's more college and career-ready than they are currently. So these are, these are my notes as Jody's talking about this, so you don't just think this is just another Desi compliance activity. It does connect to our strategy. It connects to the budgets you've approved for two years. It connects to the professional development that Amy Rose has helped, helped build with the leadership team, and it should be impacting our ability to give critical feedback to staff members when we do observations in the classroom to talk about where their strengths are and where their areas of improvement need to be, all for the sake of kids. And so when we talk about data, we talk about triangulating that data, local, state, and norms. We have lots of local data now. Our state data, whether we like it or not, to not politicize it, is MCAS, it is there. There are components of the MCAS that give us legitimate data. It's one snapshot in time. And then we also have nationally-normed assessments that we use that are more normed by grade level across the country. So that if we use that well in one good database, and we have point people leading, leading the team meetings, leading teachers through the data so they can talk about Mark and Michael and Mark's progress or lack thereof, they can then shift to the now what? What instructional strategies do we put in to react to that data? So my hope is, over time, over the next calendar year, we're having those conversations, we're having more data. You can see the fruits of the labor just in little snippets, right? When we sat here and celebrated that the middle school was identified, you know, in a positive way by the MCAS results last year, that's because the district did a lot of work around teaching and learning in mathematics at the elementary level that trickled up to the middle school, and the middle school teachers sort of took that ball and ran with it. So there are pieces of celebratory success in here. The last piece, and then I'll kick it out for questions, the last piece that I think the community has to understand, that low-income percentage is not a small percentage.
No, it's not.
And so people who, either people who live in Rockport or people who visit Rockport are potentially not aware of that. And that is a statistically high number for a small community, and that, that particular subgroup of students struggles across the Commonwealth. So when we talk about diversity and inclusion in a small town like Rockport, a big component of our diversity is socioeconomic diversity.
Yeah.
And we have to own that. We have to open the eyes to everybody internally and externally and talk about, you know, what that means for, for a young child to come from a family that's struggling that way, and how do we help them pull the bootstraps up academically, socially, and emotionally? So I just thank Jody for putting all this together, and in the spirit of public disclosure, I sat on the SOA information a little longer than I should have because I was tending to the other superintendent duties and not this particular one. So by the time I kicked it to Jody, she did not have the same amount of time as some of her peers in other districts did. So there's my formal public apology for that. But a great heavy lift. Leadership team understands the implications of this work, and my hope is that the community understands that we're trying to get us all kind of rolling in the same direction.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, too. We did see a lot of good growth in MCAS. We saw a lot of positive things, a lot of gains, a lot of pluses in the accountability. This is specifically on the data discrepancies. It's that achievement gap that we're looking to close, and I think another good thing is what we're doing won't just help close that gap, but it'll help all students.
So Jody, in the best of all possible scenarios, at the end of three years when this grant is gone, what would you hope to see?
First off, it's not a grant.
Or?
Just, I mean, it's, it's tied to Chapter 70, but it doesn't tie to the funds. This has nothing to do with the funds we get from Chapter 70. I would like to see the gaps closed significantly. We're still, we're seeing an increase in the gaps. It's not even just a steady gap, it's an increase. I really, I think the bigger focus we'll be looking at is the ELA first. The math has had some really, some good PD, some good vetting of systems and programs, and now that's kind of put to the wayside to focus on this ELA. The last SOA that was written was written with balanced literacy, Lucy Hawkins in it. That's what we found was, that's part of the problem. It's not research-based, it's not science of reading. So I'm hoping to see with the students with disabilities to close the gap in ELA achievement and the low-income students to close the gap in ELA growth. Those are the two biggest areas that I would like to see first. We do have to give an update each year at the end of the year to see where we're going. We can tweak this plan and amend it to make changes to affect anything that's not going the way that we think it should go.
Excellent.
I also, I really want to see this MTSS model, these acceleration specialists, look at how to ensure that these kids are still getting access to grade-level instruction because the longer you keep them away from it, the further the gap widens. We need to get them in and exposed to that more.
Great. Other questions or comments?
I think you both sort of touched on one of my questions, and that was the what now? And you talked about the impactful practices. And you talked about the impactful practices. So reading through this plan, there's a lot of language about, you know, using instructional practices or, you know, things that evidence-based supports. Will there be in the future more details about specifically what those practices actually are? And if so, will those be put into the plan, or will those just be something that you can report back to us about? Because you also talked about tweaking the plan. So would that be added into it, or will it always kind of be more general and then specifics just given?
It will depend on what we find. In my opinion, you can jump on me if you need to.
Right. I agree. And so I think number one is we're still calibrating what our look-for's are from an instructional practice standpoint. So what this is going to help us do is this is going to have instructional coaches working with teachers. So after you come out of a data meeting, and after you identify six or seven kids who are struggling in area A, B, and C, that instructional coach has already been in the classroom and has seen you teach and has figured out, okay, Mark's tried A, B, and C already. We haven't impacted the child in a specific way. And so really, that's part of the coach's work to go out and do some research around, okay, what next strategy should we be using? Is there too much direct instruction going on? Is there too much, is there a lack of prep? Or is there a lack of follow-up after the fact, or authentic connections, or cross-curricular connections? So a lot of it is going to be boots-on-the-ground assistance, and hopefully those PLCs, those data meetings will also be like a group think almost, where teachers will be able to share practices. Well, I have Michael in another class, and he responds to this, and I go, geez, I haven't tried that yet. So the hope is, yes, we will kind of build a repository of impactful practices based on certain kids or identified types of learners, and then we could come back to you and say, these are the strategies that seem to have worked. And then I'm sure the SOA is going to be looking for some kind of data-driven statements about your progress towards the achievement.
They ask us for specific measures that we're going to look at to see if we're making the progress. I think just one thing in particular that's come out this year is we're implementing a new program for literacy. It's brand-new. Teachers are trying to learn it. We brought in PD on instructional practices that's not from the program. So having an instructional coach help them understand how to put these activities into the program instead of necessarily going page-by-page out of the book. We've already identified some teachers like foundational reading in HMH. Some people like structured literacy in HMH. We're needing to develop some secondary resources for phonics instruction. That's something the instructional coach will be doing, you know, with grade-level teams in PLCs, so they'll have the supplemental lessons to help bring some of these scores up.
You know, and the other reality is, many of us in education have undergrad and master's degrees in instructional practice, or in pedagogy, or in our content areas. Few educators have a high-end background in data analysis and data collection, right? If you have it, it's a quick drive-by, quite honestly, at the undergrad level maybe. So that's not necessarily the expertise of even our most talented educators across the Commonwealth. So we start to put some structures in place that pull that data together, and we get people talking about instructional practices that'll move the needle, as opposed to how to collect the data and how to analyze it. That, to me, that's a better usage of our precious time that we have within the school day.
And that schedule, the common schedule now for the middle and high school is only going to help with
Correct.
teachers having some common time
Correct.
and having maybe some opportunities for, you know,
Yep.
six-through-twelve students to
Yep.
to work together.
Correct.
I know over the years and presentations, whenever we've heard a lot about MTSS, can you say a little more about the MTSS coordinator and their role, and how that is going to sort of help move it forward?
We've got an expert in-house who has done MTSS in another district before, coming here to Rockport. So she is leading the steering committee based on her knowledge. I don't know if you remember, last year we got a grant, Lead for Literacy Grant, which helped this group develop a literacy action plan, and MTSS was one of our outcomes. Yes, we talked about MTS in the past. Yes, we used ECLC to try to bring MTSS to fruition, but there was no district-wide instructional push to make sure that this was in play. So now there's a team at the elementary school of teachers of Mrs. Waterman, and it's Dr. O'Connell who's leading the charge. She's brought in all of the research and evidence-based documentation that we need. We've done that needs analysis and assessment to see where are we going next, and we're narrowing down how are we going to start this off to make it successful. We feel first half of the year is just literacy, ELA practices, moving into adding the math in the second half of the year, so we can do a slow roll. And we've had the team go out and teach our staff about MTSS and what it really means, assess their knowledge of it, and their acceptance to making it happen. And we went back this year and did it again, and there's still a real positive outlook as to what this is going to do for the students. Again, IST, Instructional Support Team, when they get together and talk about one student, how do we support them? It's still a lot of anecdotal teacher observational data. So Bridgette is the one to bring in the data and make sure that we're looking at actual things out of Acadiance, out of Galileo, not necessarily MCAS, but out of the program's diagnostic data to help target, this is what we need to work on. This is how we're going to work on it. We're going to look at it for this amount of time, and in eight weeks, we'll check in for progress monitoring, and then we'll either continue, intensify, or release. So that will be starting in the elementary first, and we hope to move it into the middle and high within the framework of this plan.
And it's purposeful that we've started at the elementary. So when we came to about the STEM initiatives and engineering programming at the high school and computer science program, we said we had an immediate gap to fill. We didn't want another group of kids to leave our high school without those opportunities. This time, we believe we need to build this foundationally, because all of the data says you've got to get kids on grade level theoretically before the end of third grade. They need to crack the code around literacy and numeracy. And if they don't, and that sounds really young, but a lot of the research is telling us if they don't have it at a grade level by then, they're already going to be at a disadvantage, because then the pendulum slips and you go from learning to read to reading to learn, and that becomes really problematic. And for those of us who have had kids come through elementary, middle, and high school in the past 15 or 20 years, we've been talking about the new way they teach math for like 20 years now, and the reality is, it's just authentic math and with words around it. It's how we use math in the real world. It's how we build budgets. It's how we do applied math. But if you struggle in literacy, you now are less likely to suddenly, that profile of a kid, well, at least they're a great math student, but I don't do well in English. That profile is diminishing over time because of the need to be able to apply both of these skill sets authentically at a high level. So because of that, we're strategically starting the elementary school. We'll roll this up, and the hope is to get this work all the way through 10th grade, you know, all the way to that finish line for MCAS, and we'll theoretically have less and less kids in need and identified through an MTSS system as the kids get older.
And I think the start of next year, it might be good to give you guys a better overview and detail of what an MTSS is, because it's academics, it's social-emotional, and it's behavioral, all under one umbrella. But we don't feel we have the capacity right now to do all of that at once. You know, we collected the social-emotional data once. So far, we don't even have that data right now. So we're starting small and hopefully grow that umbrella that will be taking care of all of those areas in this model all the way pre-K to 12.
Great.
How did, for the three critical areas that require attention, did the admin team come up with those themselves, or did the state have input into it, or how did those, you did?
The state has a whole list of things we can choose from.
Right.
But I started at the data level, looking at the data first and finding the biggest gaps. When I saw the gaps, then I could see where the areas were, and they already linked to all the things that we had already identified. And once I wrote this, then Amy Rose, Amy Waterman, and Mark all read through the whole thing to make sure that it was what they wanted to do in their buildings and in the district.
I mean, there's so much information in this, so much information. I would, kind of what you were saying, giving an update next year just on MTSS, I would love to see an update really on this whole plan, you know, twice a year maybe, maybe kind of midway through the year and then the end of the year, because to me, there's just so much in here. It's just, it's a lot.
Like Mark said, this was kind of last minute.
Right.
You should have seen this a month ago and been able to vote on it, and we probably should have. I don't know if you ever saw it. The first time it was written, 2019, because I didn't. When we updated it last year, I think when we do the updates and the amendments, then absolutely is something that we should talk about again.
Yeah, it's going forward. I think it would be great to have that.
And I think one of the things Michael and I have talked about is, you know, really tweaking our presentations next year. So instead of these all-encompassing, like, state-of-the-curriculum and end-of-year PD update, and like, so much of this work, as you've all seen this year, overlaps in multiple focus areas, documents, and initiatives, that I think we're going to tweak how we present the growth and achievement of the district, so that it might not just be an update on SOA, it might be a topical update around an area, profile of student curricular area, and then you will see the strategy for district improvement, the budget, the professional development, and the SOA sort of all dovetail into the reality of the data and student outcomes. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
And so we kind of make sure we're hitting the three or four articulated areas. Otherwise, you're right, you just drown in either repetitiveness, or it feels like just a laundry list of outputs as opposed to student outcomes.
Yeah, despite the work, this really helped me see that we have revision, where we're going, all fits exactly into what we're supposed to be doing.
Well, that's a good thing.
It was a good thing.
Great. So if there are no other questions or comments, I think I'm looking for a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act as presented for submission to DESI. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
A lot of work at the last minute, but looks good.
Don't rub it in. So purposefully and strategically placed on the agenda is the job description for Director of Teaching and Learning. I know if it's on the screen, I apologize to all of you, because that is a, oop, there's a small, you all as a school committee, you have the full version of this in your drive. So you'll take a look, you know, at the qualifications, at the summary, and basically are really careful, and it's a long list of, I tried to get this to 20. I don't know why my brain wanted it at a much more even number, but you'll see this really carefully crafted list of 21 responsibilities. And if you really do take the time to look through this and think about the presentation Jody just gave, think about, you know, the presentations that we're going to have coming up around teaching and learning and curriculum initiatives, and in my short time here, the amount of grants that we've chased down, programming that we've added at the high school, professional development and initiatives at the elementary school around literacy, this work, this is the work of a school district. Teaching and learning is actually the work. So to have somebody leading this shoulder-to-shoulder with superintendent and principals is a must-have. So I appreciate the support of the budget. I appreciate the support of this kind of a position. I appreciate you recognizing that we did that in a very cost-effective way, and still were able to reduce the cost of the administrative salary line by $100,000 and still make this happen. That's, I appreciate all of your support and recognition. So if you have questions about the job or the responsibilities, I'd be happy to talk about that. And then ultimately, we just need an approval of the job description so we can move forward and make a hire in that role.
So I would assume that these 21 qualities probably mirror best practice within the Commonwealth.
They do, and because we didn't have this job description, I went to probably four to six different school districts. They're pretty high-functioning districts that I have high respect for. And this is sort of, you know, I didn't want to reinvent the wheel, so this is sort of like a piecemeal of many districts put together that I think is most... And there were things that I sort of voted off the island, too, you know, because we have professional development is like, you know, triple-managed really, and it's kind of a team that Amy leads up. And then we have student services taking a whole, another set of responsibilities. In some districts, you have multiple responsibilities, cross-department. So this is about as clean as I can get it for us.
And I would assume that, once approved, this would be posted, or what is the thinking?
At this time, I haven't made that final decision whether it'll be an appointment or a full application process, but I will get back to you as a chair once I
But the need is right.
The need is right. Ready to go.
Ready to go. Other questions or comments or? Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the Director of Teaching and Learning job description as presented?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Nicely done. So that would move us, I believe, to the superintendent's summative
Which is the best version?
Which is the best version? It better be identical.
Do like, no, 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 you know, the best format, I guess.
Oh, best version. I see what you're saying.
Best format.
You just tell me to click when you want me to click.
Can you actually choose the view that just has the slide as big as possible?
Oh, I thought I did. Okay. Stuck in presenter view. Let me get out of presenter view.
So I think if you go right there.
Been a while since I've had to use PowerPoint, have you?
Yeah. Oh, it's still giving you presenter view, though.
So
Talk amongst yourselves.
Vamping while this is going on. So the process included reviews across state-mandated categories by all five of the school committee members. We have one in absence tonight, but the comments were integrated for all members. Are you just mirror displays? No pressure.
Don't judge me on my PowerPoint skills.
No, it's... What else can I start with? So I can...
Thank you guys for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I'm going to pull it back up a second time.
Sure. There you go.
There.
Excellent. So you can move to the next slide. So overview and timeline of this, it's a five-stage process or five-step process, self-assessment, analysis, goal-setting, plan development, plan implementation, formative assessment, evaluation, and finally, where we are tonight at the summative evaluation. Good, the next one. In terms of the process, the workflow, the rate, our job as a school committee is to rate the superintendent's performance using state criteria and rating categories that cover progress towards goals and assess performance on standards. We take the individual ratings in those two categories, and then the chair distills that into a summary report, which is what we're doing tonight. And then there's the opportunity to review, discuss, and approve it in public by the school committee. A different form, which is also in the drive, actually gets submitted to the state. The evaluation challenges continue to be with five respondents. It's a very small sample size. There's a variance in member application of categories. So one great example of that is if you have a goal that is to be completed, say, by the end of June, some members might feel like there's been adequate progress made because it isn't literally June. Others decide the trend line means met, and others might decide it's an exceptional performance. So trying to come up with a fair representation of those variations, that's something that's inherent, I think. You know, it's more important that we have goals that are achievable rather than that they match up exactly with the timing of this review. And then some of the ratings categories combine multiple topics. So we'll see in a minute, some have five or 10 areas that they're evaluating. So how you weight the different categories within that one category is a challenge. The methodology that I've used to date are rounding up to the nearest whole numbers. So for example, if numerically, there's a 4.6 rating, I might move it up to a 5. If it's a 3.2, it drops down to a 3, which I think would be familiar to the teacher in the room. Next slide. I flip it, too. Just a reminder that in terms of the state ratings definition, proficient indicates a rigorous expected level of performance exemplary really a rigorous expected level of performance exemplary really should be reserved for a model from which the entire state could benefit, and then of course, there's needs improvement developing and unsatisfactory. What's interesting about that is in arriving at the final rating, while there are four different potential ratings, there are five categories that the evaluators are presented with, including exceeded, met, significant progress, some progress, and did not meet, so kind of contorting those different evaluations into one of those four ratings is an interesting process, but not an impossible one. Next page. So in the very first category, under progress towards goals, the effective development and implementation of a new strategy for district improvement, this is one of those goals where the completion date was June of 2024, we've been hearing throughout the year about the progress of the SDI, and we actually had it presented to us. So the balance here was that three members felt that the goal had exceeded, and two of them felt that it had been met, even though super literally, June was the target date, but I think that the evidence, we'll see the, the wording associated with those evaluations showed that in general, Dr. Branco's performance on the SDI was in the higher end of the spectrum. So go to the next page. Facilitation of a high-value, high-complexity initiatives. The subgoals in that were by June 2024, the district will have successfully negotiated a three-year contract with the RTA, completed a full review of school committee policies, and transitioned to grade 612 One School Model for Rockport Middle High School Model. So here, again, based on the due date, and to some degree, factors outside of the control of the superintendent, we have two members saying he exceeded the expectations, one saying he met, and two saying there's significant progress, and probably the, the color commentary on that is the 612 One School Model was actually completed on an accelerated basis because circumstances and opportunity presented itself to do that. The RTA contract negotiation, it's ongoing, you know, without judgment, several of the sessions planned did not occur because some of the parties couldn't attend the meetings on the dates required, and then the school vacations came in, so I think it's still trending to complete in June. And then the, the full review of school committee policies, that's been going at a blistering pace with the subcommittee, which contains Dr. Branco and Ms. Lorenz and Ms. Oaks, so that'll be a photo finish, but there's also no reason necessarily to hit exactly the June date, if it goes out by a month, the idea is to get the quality, and I think in general, the members were impressed by that. New superintendent induction program, so here's one that almost has the opposite challenge. How do you exceed in participating in this program to the fullest extent if the fullest extent feels like it's proficient? So, most of the members here, or all the members here, felt that you had significantly met that goal. Professional growth. So in this category, by June, it was expected that there'd be a demonstration of an increase in knowledge base and skills related to organizational leadership by participating in or developing and facilitating a variety of professional development and/or graduate offerings that related to policy, politics, finance, and teaching and learning, research and educational leadership, and three, facilitating the development of organizational capacity related to the SDI and identified needs of the district. So here, four members felt you had exceeded that, one member felt that you had met that, and again, marks tended towards the upper end of the spectrum, so something to be proud of. So here's the summary comments, where I tried to honor the sentiments within all five members' remarks. Last year, we introduced a format of having a summary of accomplishments, a category of encouragements for further growth, and then how the ratings panned out in general, and then we get to the end of this document, you'll see all of the categories rated together. In terms of accomplishments, the SDI was universally celebrated for its comprehensive vision in supporting the academic achievement of all students in the district, as was Dr. Branco's willingness to embrace multiple, complex, high-value initiatives, including a 612 RMHS model, revised master schedule, complete policy review, the introduction expansion of internal collaborations, external partnerships, and a focus on both STEM offerings and social emotional learning supports aligned with the CASL frameworks in an expedited fashion. And I should probably quickly add to that, because Dr. Branco would leap in and add it momentarily, that many of these efforts constituted a village supporting it, that the direction and the, the management of that is coming from Dr. Branco, but things like a revised master schedule represent an enormous effort by a large number of people within the building. It was an ambitious undertaking for a second-year superintendent, requiring him to be a change agent while also building trust among core staff, and as we know through the past year, that's particularly difficult when we're creating a district that's really focused on providing supports that match the current student needs irrespective of what's preceded it, so that can be a very difficult row to facilitate. Encouragements, impactful professional practice objectives and comprehensive programming strategies were deemed valuable and worthy of continued expansion, not just a one-time effort, obviously. Across these categories, the ratings were universally high, with variants traceable to some goals having end dates that necessarily completed beyond the review date. We move on to step two, which is assessing performance on standards, and here's where there are multiple areas that you're asked to rate upon in sort of a summary method. In terms of standard one, instructional leadership, it encompasses curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, data-informed decision-making, and student learning. So what we saw here was 60% of the raters found Dr. Branco's performance exemplary, 40% found it fully proficient, which is, as I mentioned before, a very solid mark. In terms of summary comments for instructional leadership, accomplishments, Dr. Branco is seen as raising the bar professionally on multiple fronts while simultaneously addressing the urgent need to reconcile needed student supports with district resources and funding gaps caused primarily by external agencies. Defining student growth and achievement as an integral part of the SDI was applauded, as was the timely review of curriculum with district leadership using data-driven decision-making. Implemented changes were seen as realistic and appropriately addressing needed updates in curriculum. In terms of encouragements, the sustained focus on student achievement was seen as critical to maintaining the reputation and desirability of the Rockport Public Schools, as was an ongoing focus on timely, relevant feedback to parents and staff on ongoing initiatives. So I think the, the feeling there by some members was the sort of coordination and implementation of standardized communication plans was, it was a great and needed, maybe even overdue, first step, and continue down that path was something that would only benefit us in terms of parents feeling engaged and feeling aware of what was going on. Ratings, respondents noted repeatedly that Dr. Branco in his second year continued to maintain a mission-critical focus on curriculum-based changes supporting student performance, setting ambitious but attainable goals for his staff and his educators. So I know some members indicated that throughout the year, Dr. Branco was careful to delineate that the, the multiple initiatives that he had put in place in his first two years were also calibrated to be stretch goals that were actually achievable rather than just an unbelievable amount of work that couldn't get done. Step two, management and operations. So these cover the areas of environment, human resources, management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics and policies, and fiscal systems. So in these areas, 60% again felt Dr. Branco's performance was exemplary, 40% proficient. In terms of the comments, under accomplishments, the committee gave high marks across the board to Dr. Branco for his efficient management of district resources, his thoughtful approach to policy review, and his prioritization of shaping an environment that empowered all employees of the district to support efforts addressing district needs related to health, safety, and a supportive ethical workplace. The careful planning and solid execution in migrating the district back to a 612 Middle High School Model was seen as successful and supportive of staff facing a major transition. The second year of budget work saw some daunting challenges which were handled professionally and compassionately, ensuring the district remained on defensible footing academically and financially. In terms of encouragements, expanding on solid work accomplished with external and internal communications to community and staff was seen as providing consistent benefits to the district. Ratings were consistently high and continuing to be one of Dr. Branco's major strengths as an administrator. Standard three is family and community engagement, which includes engagement, sharing responsibility, communication, and family concerns. And there, it was unanimous that the school committee found that Dr. Branco's performance was proficient. Accomplishments in that area, standardizing outreach across the district with consistent dispatches on designated social media sites has helped RPS streamline and coordinate its communications. Parent and family concerns and school committee communications occur in a timely manner. Dr. Branco presents a strong, supportive, and defensible district perspective to the most challenging community members, and attends, performs various athletic and arts events. As the district has moved to maximize student support by reshaping available resources, Dr. Branco has clearly communicated both the need and the rationale, narrating a very difficult topic with compassion and professionalism. Encouragements, parents and staff members could likely benefit from communication with the superintendent in less formal settings on a more frequent, less structured basis, allowing for occasional, more personal exchanges. This can be especially meaningful in a period of substantial change. I think, you know, one member tried to describe this as having Dr. Branco hanging around, say, on parent night during the high school process, would allow parents to sidle up to him and buttonhole him about something, or just say hello, so I, I think it was more just the opportunity to schmooze with the superintendent was the request. Ratings, consistent ratings, support of revised protocol were cited. Standard four, so this is a biggie, professional culture encompasses commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, shared vision, and managing conflicts. So here, 60% again felt the performance was exemplary, 40% proficient. In terms of the remarks, accomplishments, reviewers consistently cited the substantial progress made over the last two years in professional culture in the district as a core competency of Dr. Branco. By focusing on data-driven analysis, the superintendent has attempted to depersonalize decision-making and synchronize it with educational best practice. He's consistently empowered, oop, there's a typo there, his team to make substantive decisions that support the goals of the SDI, and remains open to input on how to best engage and support the community and staff. He models the professional approach he requires of the district, second typo, diplomatically questioning the status quo with the goal of constantly improving student support and high achievement. Terms of encouragements, soliciting regular feedback across the district on the progress of ambitious goals could provide an outlet for those most challenged by the rate of change needed to remain competitive and desirable as an educational option. The ratings, the committee members were consistently impressed. So final thoughts. Dr. Branco performed at a consistently high level during his second year as superintendent, navigating an array of difficult restructuring issues with clear communication, compassion, and data-driven decision-making. He represents the district at local and state events with a high level of professionalism. He's brought needed change across multiple fronts, including operations, curriculum, and professional development, pragmatically reforming the school district to meet current student needs with resources that are focused, justifiable, and maintain ongoing viability for the district. Dr. Branco is extremely organized, thoughtful, and measured in his definition of goals, revision of process, and deployment of new methodologies. He continues to challenge and empower staff leading by example. He's a compassionate agent of change, moving the district forward with a clearly defined blueprint of the future. Dr. Branco continues to ensure that the Rockport Public Schools is a desirable and impressive district, supporting the needs of area students, and one that the town's taxpayers can be proud of. So in this last slide, this is sort of the, the summary review of all of those categories, you can see that in terms of the first step of the state evaluation form assessing progress towards goals, in terms of effective SDI development and deployment, he exceeded, in terms of facilitation of high-value complexity initiatives, significant progress, new superintendent induction program was met, and professional growth was exceeded. In step two, the assessed performance on standards, you see on standard one, instructional leadership, an exemplary rating, standard two, management and operations, exemplary, standard three, family and culture, uh, family and community engagement, proficient, standard four, professional culture, exemplary, with an overall summative performance of proficient. So I think, hopefully, that, for the members that are here, that encompassed and fairly represented how their remarks fed into this form, and I think, you know, overall, the goal of having a superintendent who in many areas in his second year is excelling, and in many is, is meeting, but ultimately is not floundering in any areas, a really impressive performance. I open it up for anybody who wants to argue that point, or support it?
Does that feel like it fairly captured the concerns and the?
Yeah, it did. Thank you for capturing all that and going through, I think you have my voice in there, which was great, so thank you for all that work, and thank you for Dr. Branco. I continue after two years to, after every meeting we have, to be very grateful and thankful that you're with us in Rockport, so thanks for all your work.
I myself am very proud that in every reference to Dr. Branco, that "a" remained at the correct pronunciation.
It did, it did. So I, it's, you know, it's not easy for you all to pull all this together, and I know there are different voices at the table and on the committee, I appreciate the support. You, you see the state of the state, so to speak, when it comes to relationships between school committees and superintendents. We, I think, as a team, understand the importance of having an honest and, and clear relationship for the sake of kids and the community in general, so I appreciate your support, but I understand the support also comes with the challenge of doing right by the district and all, and all of the community members, and so, you know, I, I remain thick-skinned, and I can take the critical feedback, and I appreciate it when I get it, and I appreciate the push and the pull, I think, you know, at least I get paid for my work, to be quite honest with you, and I chose this as a profession, and for some reason, the five committee members here decided this is how they want to spend their Wednesday evenings. And so, you know, I understand the, the volunteerism, I hope the community gets that, and, you know, the, the difficult choices that we make in this room are all really for the sake of taking care of all of the students of the Rockport Public Schools and their families, and so I, I am honored and humbled to be here, I love the job, I love the community, so thank you, thank you.
Right. So I think if there are no other comments, I would be looking for a motion to accept Superintendent Branco's summative evaluation as presented.
Someone? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Don't believe there's a finance update at this time?
Coming soon.
Yeah, the only thing is that's, uh, school choice is, will be released from the state for us to finally do the end-of-year analysis, upload all for us to finally do the end-of-year analysis, upload all the special ed incremental data to come up with the final amount that we will be receiving. That will be at the end of, well, it won't be due till the end of the month. They haven't released access to it at this time. And our third quarter closed out, and we'll have some information for you at our next meeting.
Exciting. Were there any, um, walk-on items for school committee discussion? Okay, I think there is a need for executive session for, I think, the purposes of contract negotiation. So I'm going to, um, do a voice call vote. Well, first, I'm going to ask for, um, a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of contract negotiation, and then to exit from executive session and our regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, voice call vote, Kelly, yes.
Riley, yes.
Valteria.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, goodnight.